I pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we have approval in the minutes from June 21st.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the minutes from June 21st.
Second. Any discussion? Do we need some time to get them? No discussion and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the minutes from June 28th as presented.
June 28th?
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chairman, I move we approve the bills and payrolls as presented and sign the same.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Hank?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Last time we shut this off.
We don't have students represented. It's still our... We don't have them!
I'll tell you a story. All right, we have ongoing business with SkySer, the building management report.
The end of the year, as you can see, we're ending around 275,000, so that will roll into E and D, it won't be as high as last year, but it's okay, it's not bad. And then, you can see the grants are all used up, Title I will roll over, which is allowable. Basically, it just rolled into summer and it's paying for the summer school program. And then, the revolving accounts actually look really good. Cafeteria is a little bit low, but it's still in the black, which is always a really good thing. And then, I gave you July's too, which is just kind of an estimate. We have no grants yet to report, and there's no activity in any of the revolving accounts. It's barely just ordering the supplies in the July budget.
Just a quick question, only because you mentioned the cafeteria account. I know last year we had increased the prices for breakfast and lunch, so I was just kind of curious, you know, so it sounds as if we were on target by doing that. Do we still have a lot of outstanding receivables for non-payments?
Not so much, but our salaries are what causes an issue.
And have we looked to project out over the next year when we may need to do another increase, or if we do?
This is a larger conversation? The answer to that is yes. So, we met with food service company to see if we could minimize cost, or maybe, you know, do some things differently. They've said no, we're too small. One of the things, because it is about labor, it's about the labor costs that are really hampering our ability to stay, you know, as financially solvent as we'd like to. One of the things that, you know, I'm going to come to you very soon, hopefully September, is to talk about the labor in which we expend on those half-days. They make bag lunches. The fact is that, you know, the numbers vary about how many bag lunches we make for certain for kids we'd like them to take home. That cost, that labor cost truly is really becoming an issue, whether we stay in the black or the red, quite frankly, because our labor, because the labor costs are so high. So, I'll have more on that, this is just something that will come up very quickly, given that fact that we have more half-days this year for the PD schedule.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have one, without the grant information now, do you have enough to cover the grants, the federal grants that are raised?
Yeah, the Title I number is up, and we just have to submit it. Shontae just finished writing it this week. The Title II number is up, and we just got the 240 grant, the special ed one. That number just came out like Friday.
So, we're on Friday?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Sounds good. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Dinesh.
I just want to say one comment. I just want to say thank you as to central office and everyone for monitoring the expenses and taking care of business financially, so good job. Still has to be a little bit of an extra.
They do a good job.
The end of the year report. Here, we have handbook approvals that we...
Looking for confirmation.
Tonight, we'll have the high schools student handbook online since June. So, and I've heard, have you had any feedback on the high school handbook? Are there any comments here now?
I just had my one, and this actually goes for all three, and I apologize because I read through them and I forgot to look for it, and I thought of it today in my car. We had, as a policy subcommittee, asked that in the handbooks we include a reference to food allergy bullying, so that when it cited with bullying types and examples, it would be in there. And I, as I said, I didn't look to see if it got included, and I don't know if anyone knows offhand, or...
I just looked at it, it wasn't in there.
It wasn't in there, okay.
Well, that could be an addendum, we'll pass the handbook as it is, and we can...
Would that change?
Would be an addendum in it. The other point I had, I was surprised, and I didn't know, I didn't know, maybe everybody does, that the board of health imposed those penalties for tobacco to good students. I mean, that was $100 on first of pen?
Yeah, they can, yep, yes.
They can, okay.
They can.
So, I didn't, and it is in the handbook, so parents can know that. As I said, I was just surprised. Yeah, that was good. But it was there. So, other than that, do we do them individually, Dr. Keston?
It's, it's your prerogative, Madam Chairman.
Well, let's do the high school student handbook.
So, I will make a motion that we approve the changes to the high school student handbook for 2017-18 school year, with the one change to the bullying section to include just a reference to the food allergy bullying.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You go for it, the middle school. Pretty much.
So, I will make a motion that we accept the middle school handbook for school year 17-18 as presented, with the addendum that a reference to the food allergy bullying be included in the bullying section.
Second. Need a second minute? Do, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the elementary?
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the elementary handbook for school year 17-18 with the addendum that we reference food allergy or food awareness bullying in the bullying section.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I actually want to make sure this gets back to the administrators in this building, because the autocorrect and the changes were well delineated, and it was easy to follow. So, thanks them very much, all right.
I will.
I'm sure the rest of the committee found that as well. Ongoing business for bleacher project update.
We were going, we are, we're going along swimmingly. The bleachers were removed, the space in which the bleachers were located were landscaped, and seed was put down as per the plan. We, the bids went out for the new bleachers and returned with only one, one bid, which, by the way, was not even complete. So, the OPM, who's helping us with this project, had reached out to the companies that, the primary companies that do these type of things, and they were very worried about the timeline. It was a very tight timeline. So, they are confident that if we change the timeline to the spring, that will, again, we don't know until we know, but we should receive, you know, up to four or five complete bids for the bleachers themselves. Most of these companies are out of the South, so they incur costs, especially when they hear November, and they hear Thanksgiving, they think a foot of snow, and that started to worry them, quite frankly, and other pieces of it. So, to be financially responsible, we, of course, did not act on the first bid, because it was only one bid, and it wasn't even complete. So, we're going to rebid it and put it out there again, and it'll be for the spring.
Yeah, it's going out to bid in September, and I believe the first week of October, they're opening the bids again. And we're hoping that we can get, like, the foundation put in this fall, so literally come springtime, the bleachers will just get installed right on it.
So, it'll be announced that during games, they bring their own chair?
BYOC, yes. I have a letter ready to be sent out to the community, but now is not a good time to send a letter. We've got a lot of letters going out there right now, so I want to, I'm going to just wait a couple of weeks while the handbooks and everything get out there, so.
Do you think we have to mark it to BYOC?
I have a meeting with the, we have a shirt idea, I don't want to give it away, it's a good one. But we're talking to the Booster Club and a few others to make sure we get the word out there. We've already talked to the band, where they'll set up the cheerleaders, because that's part of the, you know, part of it. And we've already established how we're going to take care of that. So, we have the plan in place. The hill looks very nice though, grass, it's already coming in, I have to tell you. But anyway, we're moving quickly, and we're moving as quickly as we can, but we've got some ideas.
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat.
Okay, good. I'm sensitive.
Got the old when material thing written out. All right, school choice update, that's all away from the beginning of the year, but we really don't have numbers to win.
Well, we have school choice in, and we know, we know that. And I can tell you that as of Chelsea, three hours ago, we have 224 school children in this district, and that's up from 202 from last year. Our total enrollment right now is 1,444. And that is up from, depending on what month, but if I was to do a year-to-year, you know, month-to-month, year-to-year comparison, that's up from 1,392. So, we're full. Right now, just give you a quick, because this will play into the conversation in a minute, about the guidance counselor, but we have 120 in the eighth grade, 103 in the seventh grade, 116 in the sixth grade, and 116 in the fifth grade. And most of them are residents. And so, it's, when the churn report is done, which will be in September, where kids have come and gone back from, we'll have a better look at that. But we, DES is also, we are full, we're full. That's a good thing.
But they're mostly our students.
As of, the largest gain for us right now, we have a total of 1,220 residents. Last year, depending on what month, we're around 1,189. So, that is, that is a great thing.
Yes. Thank you. Any questions on the update?
What's the implication of all these new school choices?
We, I can't give away my big speech tomorrow, so you can't pull that out of me. But we, perception is reality, and we, right now, people have heard very good things, and we're not saying that, I'm not saying that from this perspective, people have called us and said those things, that they have heard very good things about us, and about how we take care of kids. And we'll go in a little bit of that tomorrow, but that is really, honestly, I think, that's the understanding that we have at this point in time, given the sample.
Thank you. Been looking for public input. And now, I don't see any public input. So, you have Mrs. Parker, welcome back from the summer.
Thank you.
And the DEA, how is that going?
Tomorrow is day one for education exam. Seems like everybody's getting ready and geared, and the building's looking fantastic, the building's vibrant, it's been involved, so I think it's going to be a good start for high school. Things looking wonderful, so it's a good two-way start, and we have lots to think of over the next two days, so hopefully we're also really positive this year.
As good as it can be. Any comments from the school committee? Oh, yes.
Public forum, public input in DEA really should be under appearances, so that it's done earlier in the meeting and they move on past that.
We certainly accommodate that. Sure. Thank you. You pulled good, we have the superintendent's report now.
Okay. So, the staffing updates, there is a, in your packet, you will find, I'll go through this, kind of a...
F2.
Or two, there are two, so it's number two, F2, in your packet. We are highlighting, obviously, the budget position that may have left, and the person that has replaced, if there was a replacement. And I can tell you, with the exception of, which I think just, literally just happened, a special needs pair, a couple of special needs pairs, because they were moved around, we are, we are fully hired. We have all of the folks, we've replaced all the folks who have left, you know, one way or for one reason or another. And so, we're very, we're happy about that, of course, because, and that happened actually very quickly, we did not worry too long about that. And I'm looking to make sure, but one of the issues that we'll talk about, I think, later on down on the agenda, is that we're, given the numbers that we just spoke about, I need to discuss the need for someone on the RIF list, the guidance counselor position at the middle school, to be reinstated. I want to speak about those numbers, you heard me read those numbers earlier, that was done for a reason. We're at 455 total children at the middle school. Now, I only have a year, you know, under my belt, but what I do know, looking back in time, that the middle school has not seen 455 kids in at least three years. So, going back, it gets a little, it gets a little bit, and I know way back, it was well over that, I do understand that. Given the implications, and given the, given the need of these students, because we do know, when they come in, we do have their, we have their information, we know either via IEP or otherwise, some of the services that they're going to require, it would be prudent, and we thought, and we do have a plan, but to, for your approval, but to take the guidance counselor position for the middle school and reinstate her, because the numbers, the sheer numbers at this point are even, they're well above what the, kind of the standard is per guidance counselor, or, you know, or school adjustment counselor per child. That ratio is now very skewed, now we have 455 students per one, if you think of it in a certain, a certain way, and the level or inacuity of need is also another part of the issue. I mean, I can go further, I can go into the plan, I'll continue if, so what we know, now, this is public record, this was in the slide presentation back in May, early June, that the, that cut was the total of $51,993. That's what that position afforded us to balance, when we riffed that position. We, right now, because, I'm going to go back to school choice, our school choice differential between in and out has been the best, I think, in recorded history, if we don't go too far back. But we do have, what I'll say very carefully, is that we have money in that account, we don't like to put teachers in that account, because that is a very fickle number, but we do have the money because of the increase of school choice coming in, to cover that, you know, for this year. We've looked at this a lot of different ways, there's really no other way that we can stretch the existing guidance counselors slash adjustment counselors to make, to make any real, to make any sense, or to make any real difference. And so, that is before the committee, at this point in time, that my request, given our plan, to reinstate that position.
So, are you making a formal request to reinstate?
I am making a formal request to reinstate the middle school guidance counselor position that was reduced in force for the FY18 budget.
And the basis for that is, among your school, your school reports, and teachers addressing priorities of need, social, emotional, was number one?
Well, yes. So, our number one priority this coming year is the social, emotional well-being of, not only, it's always of students, but we're also training our staff this year. That is the mission or the focus, and I'll go into that tomorrow, but that's what the main thrust of our professional development will address this coming year. Given that, given that, we need to be able to make sure that we take care of those students whom require, you know, I just don't want to say guidance, but certainly guiding services or, you know, or counseling services. And we can't very well do that with what we have currently, in terms of the staffing in order to do that.
Do we have comments? So, out of the priority of cuts, bringing this one back, you mean this, is the one that we can come back with that given school choice money, that's pretty fickle, because it's not always there.
It would give us the opportunity, the money does exist, so this isn't money that we necessarily don't have, we're banking on to have, we do, this is from the school choice, obviously, from the last FY, because we were always a year in arrears, right? So, we do, in fact, have the money, of course, in the budget process, we'll have to reassess. At no point, again, at no point did we think that we would increase close to 50 students overall, you know, at various, at certain levels, in various levels. And I think that that's what caught us, quite frankly, by surprise, because it's the unknown, there's really no way to forecast that, given the amount of residents who have, we can control school choice, but the residents were the, were a huge increase over this summer.
Can you, we have classroom numbers by grade?
Sure.
No, are they here in the paperwork?
No, they are not in the paperwork themselves, because we were updating, again, the sheet was being updated. I can easily send that along, but I can tell you...
So, has that number influenced class, so that some grade level is doing a larger number of students that was planned?
Yeah, so the middle school, for one, absolutely.
All grades?
All grades are up, all grades are up, at the middle school, five through eight. Ballinville Elementary, which we, again, there has been no school choice at Ballinville Elementary, excepted, and they, they've actually increased to 289 students. And this is up from 200, and I'd have to go back into my PowerPoint, but this is, they're up almost, I think it's close to 14 students, or something to that effect, don't quote me, because I'd have to go back, but that has increased. The high school's increased, not as much, but, but the middle school itself has absolutely increased, far beyond our expectation. 120 hasn't been seen in a grade, I've been told, at least three, four years, and that's, you know, that's when kind of record keeping starts.
So, the reason I'm asking is to say, I know the need is there, what I don't want is September to have parents in here, because there's a classroom of 32, and, you know, they're saying they need another...
There is no classroom of 32, but I will say to you that, there was, yeah, there's no classroom of 32. But given, given some of the classroom sizes, the total number of kids divided by either four or five at the middle school, it doesn't equally, it doesn't break down as cleanly as it does in the elementary, because they're only in one class, so it, because they do diff, you know, there's a lot of different variables there. But we're getting, we're getting to the point where, if more residents move in, or move back, or whatever the case may be, that that might be a discussion as we move forward. We haven't, we did cut one, not cut, we didn't cut a, we cut a position on a person in the sixth grade, so that, those numbers are about what they, well, they're a little bit higher, but not tragically higher than they were last year at the sixth grade level. Was it sixth grade or the fifth grade, I'm sorry?
Sixth.
Sixth grade, yes, the sixth grade. It was a math position that turned into the math coach, if you remember so, double math or, but that was only for one area. So, no, no 32, there'll be no 32 member classes.
So, can you mention, form any notes in the, in the case that the government plans to move to the middle school, and some of these students, they're returning, and obviously will be addressed, and we'll get some more information. Any questions?
Second.
Hank?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, we need to recertify the FY18 budget, and we have paperwork in your packet that suggests, so that we're going to have, Margaret, did you read them?
Sure.
Thank you. But they're all in the packet.
Why are we recertifying?
We're recertified for the amount of money that is...
For chapter 70, final numbers.
Oh, okay.
We're going to recertify all of the numbers.
Yep.
So, having the motion that we certify the total amount of funding, like, is $20 million, $828, $221, I'm going to get all of them together, that's okay. That, that, the motion that revokes the estimated income of $10,001, $73, $74, for chapter 17, which is based on chapter 70, and 71, is a revocation of the budget position. That revokes the acceptance of the tempers, the amount of $6 million, over $644, there's no change. That means more than $200,000, the amount of $1,000,49, $41,000, the total, and that revokes, the net charge, total of $531,000, $25,000, upwards, $436,44, and that is the vote called over.
We need a second. We need a second.
Second.
And I say yes.
That's it. I think everything goes as planned.
So, the total increase in chapter 70 was $13,040.
So, that's on the question, from the 10, 120, then the chapter 15, then the 201.
No.
So, we have a ground, master lawnmower needs to be bought.
Mass General Law says that the school committee has to approve any lease that we enter into, so this is the formality for the new piece of equipment that the building subcommittee approved for maintenance. It's a replacement lawnmower.
Does everybody hear that?
Yeah.
Where-- Yes, yeah.
Seventeen months, seventeen months.
Yes.
So our motion that we approve the piece of, you know, 16 months, so seventeen months, you know, two or more, for the private, uh, for the, uh, second, yeah.
Any comments, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Rick, uh, update on approval. This has to be approved with this number, that one change?
Go ahead.
The long-term teacher sub is based off of a B1 in the NDA contract, but a B1 does not exist in FY18 anymore. So this number was the B1 from last year, which we're just asking you to approve the number, not the B1, so that we can pay them. The number we paid last year was the amount before their increase. This is the true FY17 B1 number.
How much would that hold?
2013.
201.
Buck, a dollar.
In our contract, the long-term sub is paying this amount if they're there for three months? It doesn't, there's no provision for the longer you stay, or is it?
No.
No.
So anyway--
We have--
Okay.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Looking at surplus items.
Yes. So you have information in your packet in regards to, I'm going to go over the fifth grade science materials, but the surplus, this is one of those unique situations in which we discussed this last year. The company sent the wrong books to the middle school. They refused to take them back. So they were, they sent us, and so they were free because they wouldn't send them back. They wouldn't take them back. We reordered them again, it was at the end of the year. They sent the same wrong books again. Peter did an excellent, Dr. Cushing did an excellent job by getting on the phone and expressing his displeasure. So we have received the science books that we need. We have those. But the company will not take these back. So what we're asking here, and this specific situation is that you declare them surplus, so that way we may put them out there, because there are, these are excellent books, and that there may be districts, we know that there are districts out there who will be interested in this product. We can't use them. They're not, they're not part of our series. So we really can't find a use for them because they don't fit our curriculum. Yeah. So the other piece is, the other is actually a piece of equipment that went part of the Toro Polar Track conversion kit for the old mower. Well, we don't need that conversion kit any longer, and it doesn't fit on the other piece of machinery. So we know that there are folks who have this mower or this vehicle that could use this. We can't use it any longer. So it would really, literally just take up space. So this is another opportunity in which to put it out there for folks from other districts or whatever, municipalities, or whatever the case may be, to purchase that and we'll get, you know, see some money back rather than let it sit there. It's just, really would have both done.
Do we have a second stand?
Yes, second.
Any discussions, all those in favor?
Aye.
The, um, this, the sale of those books, it's done, so it has probably healed the engine.
It'll come in as miscellaneous income for this year, and that's where it will end up, the end of next year.
Or gift revolving or something.
Yeah.
Too bad there wasn't some way to use it in the middle school.
If you know Dr. Cushing, he uses everything twice. If there was any way that he could possibly use these books, trust me when I tell you, he would use them. Oh, well, that could be real, well, that could be, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
That's just another question. All teachers have voted to thank and request--
As far as I know.
We have heard nothing to the contrary, so.
We've ordered all the supplies that they've submitted, so.
There's a reckoning, obviously, as time goes on to see, as you know.
Well, because we ran into this before, so maybe we could just check to make sure department has had the reports out there, people can be able to get it to the appropriate people, because who would be on the teaching on that board if they mean-- And I know, you know, the department has said, if they said, listen, if you got, get what you need up here, we'll do what we can. Thank you. We have a follow-up to you, Dr. Cushing.
Yep. This is, I'm going to say a fairly unique situation. A matter of circumstances came to bear for me and others to find out that of the six twirlers in the band, five of them are either, they do not go to school here, and they're not homeschooled. Okay? Just, I'll just put it out just like that. Some of these children have been, their status has not changed. They have been in the same status for their time as a member of the band. So whether it be Sajja School, Monty Tech, I'm trying to think some other, the other possible scenarios. Homeschool really not so much of an issue, but those scenarios, these children have been part of this program and part of this for three years. That came to my attention a week ago, a week and a half ago, roughly. I met with a variety of people, and there is, on one occasion, one of these, one of these students is a senior and has been there for all four years. Matter of fact, beyond that, because some of these people have been members of the band when they were actually eighth or seventh graders in the middle school. Okay? So they were given some erroneous information that as long as they were members of the town or of the district and a band wasn't available to them, that they could, they could join the band. None of that is true. So let me just go ahead and say, no one, that is not true. There's a policy, obviously before you, that has been written to say otherwise. Given all of this and given the conversations that I had, what I, and I am, I'm requesting that we would waive the, I believe it's policy JJJ, which is the extracurricular activity eligibility rule, or pardon me, policy, for these members and these members only, to grandfather them in. And of course, for eternity, make sure that everyone knows, because everyone now, you can trust me, knows that this is not, that that is not the case in which their interpretation of whether or not they were in this community or not. I will simply say that is my request. It is about children regardless. I do believe that they were given some erroneous information, and we did, were able to track that down. But after hearing all of this, it'd be my request to this committee for those students and those students only, that that would be waived and they would literally, quote unquote, age out. So once they, once they did their, they graduated or whatever the case may be, that of course, this would not be allowed to happen because it's not allowed to happen.
So I'm going to give a motion that we allow all, certainly, you know, to dance by night, and, uh, outside of this policy, JJJ, which is, actually, this is, this is a, today is the law, and not, I need you to, because the law would be about that policy.
Second.
Any discussions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Were, weren't we talking or going to be discussing, trying to, I can't remember the word, but basically like integrate other schools with us or open discussion of other schools working with us? And I have no problem with these kids, if they are not, if they don't have that option where they currently are to be in our band or whatever. I'm thinking that this policy should be rewritten for that reason, of that inclusion or whatever it was that, I know we've talked about it. Okay, so-- Well, it's not necessarily sports. I know the conversation has come up about possibly--
But many of the people that I know now are, you know--
Right.
That side of this policy, although, because, that says, and still, and co-op of, why, that actually part of the policy.
And then you have the handles that, also, so that kind of covers some of the problems that might come up, I think.
And we have not, we have not a problem with the future.
Right. I don't have a problem with it.
Are we sure that this is the only place that students do not go to our school level? In other words, I guess what I'm asking is that this, this is this, but I would like to check with the directors to make sure that this situation doesn't affect that.
So to your answer, to answer the direct question, I have not had an opportunity, given that school hasn't really been in session to talk to the other, really, because it boils down to extracurricular activities, because athletics, the MIAA, there is, there's just no, there's no way, right? There's just no way you could possibly do that, right? Even, even my mistake almost. So I haven't had an opportunity to do that because it just hasn't, we haven't, I haven't had the availability. But certainly, I will say this, it's my recommendation, that if I was to find that we, that this doesn't cover every, right, this doesn't, if I, we unearth, I don't know what, hopefully nothing, that that doesn't necessarily carry over completely, you know, for everything else. I don't believe so, but I do need to check, but I won't be able to do that till school starts.
And of course, any of these students who love our extracurricular, welcome to come to our school.
So.
Welcome.
Right. Absolutely.
So we're extending the following, to the second, although, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're ready. So as Lisa said earlier, you know, the buildings look fantastic. I think that we say this every year. I hope that people don't think we say it just because. The buildings don't only look fantastic, they're unbelievable. The work that they do with the custodial staff under, with Rick Molton is really, honestly, incredible. They do the incredible every year, and they did it again. There was a lot of things, a lot of painting, a lot of different things. And you walked into that building today and it is, it is ready to go. So in terms of, we have the schedules out, folks know where people are going. Tomorrow, we'll get together at eight and celebrate some folks who've been here a while and some folks who have professional status. And then, as we've talked about, and it's been out there, that we'll conduct analysis training for the entire staff, and that'll be our main focus really for day one, and then all the other things that we need to do over the rest of the next two days. So it's come together very well.
What is the official Monday school for students?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday. Kindergarten started, will start in essence the next, the following week, which is the Tuesday, the fourth, fifth, eighth, ninth.
And we have a list of open morning stations.
It's really good. So what we did last year is we had lunch. We, really, my schedule, so they're back on their shifts now. So now nights are there and swings are, so we're still going to do that. It's just, we'll have to do it, you know, kind of piecemeal, you know, but we'll do dinner, basically, or lunch, depending on your time of the, time you're working. But, you know, they'll be, they're certainly invited tomorrow to the lunch that we have. We have a potluck, you know, for all staff, et cetera. So we do do that. The timing of it was a little, was a little off, and that's really on my schedule. We are going to take care of that in the very near future, not something like down the road, like in the first week or two, we'll get with everybody to do something, Chinese food or, you know, dinner, whatever they would like.
I think we could say that the, my correct, the school community appreciates more of the students, so that we could let them know that.
I will.
I also see the open morning station.
Yes.
They had some characters had prior times that they've been announced that they could go to the schools, prior--
Right, depending on who and what grade. So last night was a wonderful, as everyone knows, the fifth grade, parents were, anybody could have gone, but mostly it was for the fifth grade parents. Dr. Cushing and company did a fantastic job. It was quite, the place was packed as usual. We have kindergarten screening that's next week, and during that timeframe, those parents can visit with their, you know, with their child, obviously, to the various classes for a quick visit. But other than that, the most of, most of what you see here is really, this is the schedule, in other words. So those groups have been, have been talked to or information has been sent out via all the ways that we send out information.
You know, I know the freshman academy--
I missed the freshman academy, absolutely.
So nobody else presented, um, in the state, state of America. What about that concern that's to be really the only other group that doesn't have a tough time with that first, second grade enrollment, still be safe here?
Yeah. So Mr. North, you know, we, he, we talked about it, and he inquired. It was because it's never been, honestly, something like that had not been done before. We were up against that timeframe, which I didn't want to spring anything on to with, just suddenly, because that would need some, like, we would need to figure out some logistics on that. But Mr. North and I did speak about that. We'll have to kind of think about that next year, but that's something that he would like to do. But when we really got to it, it was just not enough time to put it out there without causing--